Welcome everybody tonight. We'll start as we normally do. This is a special call meeting, but we'll treat it like a regular board meeting. We'll go over our prior request list. Tonight we've got to remember Ms. Connie Dyer and her father passed away. Angel Williams, her mother's in the hospital. Ms. Norma Mitchell, son-in-law's in the hospital. And Ms. Tricia Oliver, sister's battling COPD and her mom's battling dementia. Do we have any others we need to add to that list?
My dad, who is recovering from knee replacement surgery.
My mom's been in the hospital. She's doing much better, but remember her.
Any others? If not, we'll go the Lord in prayer. To heaven and father, we come to you thanking you for another day of life you've blessed us with. Father, many times we take that for granted. We just want to pray that, Father, that we won't do that. We won't take our health for granted. All the many blessings we're given, Father, just help us to always be a grateful people and never to overlook things that we're given just day to day. Father, as we're here tonight to look over the school safety program, Father, we just want to pray for our school systems, pray that they'll always be safe, pray, Father, that we'll make the right decisions and helping to secure them, Father. And just, again, Father, we always want to pray for the safety of our children, our faculty and staff here in our school system. Father, we just want to thank you tonight for your son. Father, in his name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are here for a special call board meeting to discuss our safety planning. And I will turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Well, first of all, I know that it's a time of the year and we're pretty outside. Ladies and thanks, well, I appreciate y'all being here. And I do think at the same time that as bad as I hate to use the word momentum, something bad, we need to keep it going instead of waiting for the next thing, the next thing that happens. And like I said, Robin always teach me, you know, we need to be proactive and so we need to be that way. And this is, there's nothing more important in the world or it's not a better natural resource than the welfare. And I don't know what it had to been a special call meeting, we weren't doing no good getting everybody here. I had two different board members that contacted me about different things. I felt like we needed to be discussing safety. And we kept talking about it, talking about it, and kind of how we would get everybody together, I guess. So we needed to do that. Tonight, more so than normal, I don't know proper procedures as much as when I love Sheriff, there's a ton of information in that young man right back there, Mr. Sheriff Hopper. We've got, make sure I'm pronounced correctly, pronounced correctly, Buford Tuns. He's got a world of experience. Met with him, he's, I think we can accomplish a lot with the questions, answers with these people here tonight. We have principals, I look around, I see some county commissioners. I appreciate y'all being here. You don't have any reason to be here other than Kerry. I appreciate that.
Yep.
So I don't know exactly where we want to go with this. I'm going to let David when it gets to a certain part, I'm going to run through, just kind of without giving you the complete game plan. We can't put exactly everything we do because we'd be educating the public too much. When I say that, we're wronging people, but we want people to feel comfortable in what we're doing. Today, I'm going to catch you up, there's a safety grant possibility. I call it the grant qualifier, that every person, we hosted one here last week. And we had to have at least two representatives from every building to be there, and we did. We hosted for Tribedale, Macon, and Smith. And we had a lady that came, actually several people, but the lady spoke was an administrator at Homeland Security. This thing had been thrown together by the state, and she wasn't real nice about it, didn't need to be, but she let us know real quick that we were the last that she done. She wasn't going to read it to us on page six on exterior fencing, or on page nine was about to end here, and we could read her stuff, that's what she told us. And then she walked around the building and pointed out things. But to do that, to make a long story short, my understanding, we've got a different, Kim and I, Kim is basically our, we had such a thing as safety director, I thought I used her for a while, and she keeps all this in a book and makes sure we're following the law. Tricia keeps both of us straight, and so I won't bother them to jump in, it will too. But it changed. State never does anything, like I was telling you earlier, at first they told us they was going to fund half of X number of positions instead of just saying the amount. And then after that, they're going to come back and fund two halves. Well, that's totally changed. And then, Kim, did you not understand, say, even from fencing to camera systems to card readers to everything, there's a possibility some of that might work?
That it would be based on your assessment, yes.
And so what we did, each school done an assessment. And we know that against our principal, but the way Shane thinks might be different than the way I think, so we wanted to be consistent. We didn't want to lie, but we wanted to make sure we were getting everything we could justify. So we met back this morning and for what, about three hours? And hopefully everybody got their assessment completed, which will qualify us for the most we can get. Don't know what that is of any, but that's where we're at. In that meeting, there was some really good things come out, if you think outside of that. You know, I think that I'm pretty good with security, but even at that, you know, there's a ton about tree limbs, even people hiding them, exterior fences. Old Buford, when I sit in top to him, pointed out some really good things regardless of what happened tonight. Buford has got a wealth of information, some things he pointed out in your office that I hadn't thought about, you know what I mean? And those are the kind of things I think we need to be educating their teachers, their principals, and the public on, because those things will cost a lot. Those things we can do. I do think that we need an SRO. I think I told you this before, five years ago, I thought it was a, no offense, Sheriff, but I just didn't like the feeling. I never want to walk in, hey, we got a gun, gun. I didn't, I'm a gun man, okay? But now I wish we had three in everybody. I think that's, the world's changed and the field of safety, I think we need it. We do have six right now. One of those is funded by the Wiltshire City. And my understanding is, and Jamie, I don't want to speak out of line, I say that because you guys represent, but there's a chance that they may not fund that one, correct? Nick, sure? And so that's something over there. And I do want to make sure, as I said, we, without the help of anybody, funded our SROs. That wasn't, we funded, out of everybody. I'm just going to run over some stuff, and then if you have a question to answer, I'd be happy to, and show you, like I said, without giving you the whole game plan and things we've done. I guess the year before I started, we put the four years in, which has really improved the safety upfront. At least, somebody wants in, they're going to come in. I'm a parent too, that's just the facts of it, but it will buy some time, it does create safety. One thing, that we took our safety grant for the past about five years, instead of going out and borrowing money, we have rotated on what we thought the schools that didn't have an SRO, the schools that had the most traffic, we have budgeted and spent our safety money, so we now have a camera system in each building. The lady, I thought, took this personally, very good compliment from Homeland Security, said, "That is the best camera system I've ever seen in a high school, ever." That's kind of Homeland Security, that's pretty awesome. And we've got that in every school, ready to wire into here. Then also our SRO insurance department will have a password too, that one person from the command center can get in that molly to every school, and that's pretty, pretty good. And with that, we're starting now with the card readers, and she loves that, Homeland Security, that's one of the things that it will mark everybody. Tommy says, "Well, they didn't get it on my card." Well, they did, because it marked us the one, "You've been there three times this weekend." And I went home, well, somebody did. I got your card, and then we can change that card. And we spend a lot on locks, and it will pay for itself. It's much less than the original bids that we got, and we have to check it into it. And we can do that, I think, over here, like we do with cameras, and integrate it all to get radios. Now, everybody has what I call a 911 radio. They can speak. Now, we're having some problems with towers still, we're still working on. Sheriff has been very gracious to work with his department and all the departments, but it's kind of go through them, and they give us permission. I don't, I hope you don't know they've got it, other than us asking, because we haven't had no issues, but they can cut out the middleman, so to speak. They can go straight, it tells, huh, they can go straight to 911, they can go straight to Sheriff's Department, they can go straight to ambulance service. Everybody has that capability now. And be on a scanner, know that there was a shooting, someone would have led them to go in and lock them before we could even call them. So we got that, we've got the radios now, we just don't have the full capability, the towers, we're still working on some areas. We're still working on the phone boosters that we talked about. I told Robin earlier, they've given us several bids, but we can't get the people to even show up. Like, Tricia's helped me on that for six months, and they'll email and they won't call back, and we're just trying to get that good experience getting people to come. We do think that's something that's thinking. One thing, we kind of done a poll in here this morning, because it's really big with me, not only for safety, but for maintenance and electricity and all that, you've heard me speak about that. But every door in Smith County is supposed to be locked and shut. Now, some of the old metrics we've made a little, because they're ramming in and out, and we're using some of these magnetic, it covers the lock, and all we've got to do is flip it, you know, especially, like we used to with kids, taking the doors when we get work, the GM when we went there. I knew that trick. But they've been, somebody should have got paid for it, they invented a little thing now, it's magnetic, and it's, it's what it likes. And that's a problem everywhere. I mean, my office here accidentally gets a rock put in it back here by my people about once a week, and I've got to kick it out. And so that's some things we're looking at putting alarms, that for three minutes, so on, we can self-adjust all that. We need to be looking at some safe places within the building, some better than, Kim does a wonderful job, but we need to also, and I know I've talked to Kim enough, we don't need to just put down things on paper that appear at the state, we need to have working things at work. And we don't want to be, we don't want to have no worry, but we don't want it to happen here, and if it does, we want to be very prepared. That's kind of where we're at, right now, the SROs, I don't even want, when the drug dogs or the SROs, I don't even want Sheriff, and I tell Jason and Sheriff, which is kind of who commands the SRO, I don't want to know. That way, he's got them now in a rotation system, and so we don't know where the three that rotate are being at. And I don't want to know, I don't know, nobody should know, and for safety. Obviously, if we got one in every building, that's our goal, everyone needs to go about doing that. But there's some, David was on the ideal, and like I said, I feel like anytime an old member has an ideal, we need to look at it. That time we went and met with Buford, I'm going to call you by your first name, that's okay?
That's fine.
But I do think that he's got a wealth, I seen immediately, just walking in the office is pretty impressive of all the things you've done, and I think we can learn a lot from you. I think Sheriff could interject, and I see Mark back there with his background, and like I said, the county commissioners, I know both y'all got a wealth of experience in a lot of different areas, so let's just kind of open it up, if anybody's got anything they want to ask or say.
We also, your summer before last, did the active shooter drill, and then you've approved for that to happen again in the 2019 summer, so we'll start planning that in August.
And it was a really big deal. They did transport like 18 different victims, and some of them all the way from deceased to minor gunshot wounds. And I think once you got involved and really got the initial planning, so we can kind of educate the public, that was a really good thing.
Well, it was very eye-opening for the staff. I mean, we staff teachers and paraprofessionals, that that's not their focus, so opening their eyes to that kind of situation gave a new perspective, because it's not, let's just go, let's help everybody that's hurt, and let's go on out of the building. It's not like that. It made a difference for awareness.
And I don't think you get credit for something that doesn't happen. And what I mean by that, we've been very, I don't like to use the word lucky, but I think the sheriff and the deputies and law enforcement here in general are very scenic. And having a park outside, coming to events, we appreciate. We appreciate that, Sheriff, and you're, we couldn't ask for a better relationship, and we couldn't ask for better, I don't think the SROs as a whole, what you've furnished us through the training, so I think, we got a problem. We were very good at being seen, they're very good at patrolling. I mean, Jason does a fantastic job of organizing them out on the campuses. You know, obviously, if I'm going to sit in the office and my feet up reading the newspaper and everybody knows that all day, that's, you don't get a lot of mileage out of that, because they know where I'm at there. You know, I go, Glenn Reese, man, he's all over to feed the campus. He walks up track, I think, three times a day, and no schedule, and he's out front and parks his car in different places. I mean, just little things like that are a great standard.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes, sir. There's many, many, many avenues of this, and of course, many of us know, officer presence is the first deterrent for law enforcement. That's the first thing. Education is huge for not only, not only the teachers and the school staff, but also the SROs have got to be trained the proper way. Communications is huge. Unified command, there needs to be a unified command. The deputies, and I'm thankful for the Gorden's Law Officer, but you need, you need a unified policy, a unified department over all this. It don't need to be different departments, because there's different protocol. They've got to have the same understanding, the same training. And if SRO never has to take a first level of law enforcement while he's there, he's one. And we overlook that a lot of times. His job is to protect and somewhat build a rapport with these children and mentor, if he can, with these people. So it's bigger than just having a police officer there. We don't, we don't need just, of course, we're working on the three more, and I think it's coming up to the next budget. That's all going to put us at nine. You're going to still have somebody else that needs to be, the supervisor needs to be there as well. There needs to be actually 10, and they need to follow in the same department. So in fact, we need two more on top of the eight that the county's going to have, to want to replace the Gordon's Law Officer, and want to oversee this whole division of the Sheriff's Department. With that number 10, in my opinion, housing of that person would be a great place, would be the biggest school. So therefore, his office would be there, which would take a, the school system and the Sheriff's Department to agree with that person having an office there, and if he needed to, he could float. He could, if there was a SRO that was out that day, he could go to one of the schools that didn't have him, you know? And if they was there, then you've still got two offices in the same school. And then there's many, many, many other ways that you can do it, with, if officers would go by there and have their lunch there, or whatever, you know, just stop by and then check on the SRO. And it's endless. And it don't just, it's not just the sheriff's responsibility, it's all of us. And not only on top of that, there's prevention as well. We need other avenues, and I know we're talking about SROs this time, but it's a huge picture, and it can't be just solved with SROs, but that is a, that is an eight, that is something that helps with. It's a, it's a huge, huge window there that we've got to feel.
I talked to, as a matter of fact, Officer Sheriff's in the office today, he's been here all morning on the safety plan, and I talked to him about that exact thing, that if we can agree, if we have what we wanted, we need one in every school, and him be the commander, and he could, you know, if he's out, nobody knows where he's going to be at, he's doing ongoing training, follow-ups, about the same, a lot of things as you talked about there, Mark.
Mr. Wood?
A couple of things. Number one, as Mark alluded to, budget finance is sent, they're going to send a recommendation to the county coordinator this June meeting to fund three more SRO offices. And it's a special aside, it's not in the budget, it's something that they wanted to let all 24 commissioners vote on. But one thing that's not addressed in that is the fact that the sheriff's budget, every time he adds an officer at SRO, you're looking at about $50,000. And so we've got to kind of work together, the school board and the county commission needs to work together on the funding on this, because it's not just the SRO salary, but it's also, you've got to send them to the academy, you've got to have them trained, they've got to have equipment, they've got to have a vehicle. There's a lot of more involved in it than just the salary of the SRO. And so we need to work together to try and make sure that we cover those expenses that are coming in. And I think the money is there, I believe you'll see that in this budget. We've got a pretty good budget put together, and I believe we'll be able to help, and I hope you guys can too, because it's going to take both of us working together to get this done. We need, we need these officers in.
And that's what we think, we're funding five of them now. That's my point, without any help. I think the public, I think in general, people think that that money's, that came out of education budget, five of those SROs with no help.
Right, and see, that's what they don't realize, we're already working together. Sheriff's budget, handling the training, he's handling the equipment, he's handling the cars, and he's got handling the salaries, and if we keep working together with that, we can, you can make.
And that's a, that's a great point, that's what people don't understand, that we, you know, when we do SROs, we're talking about, and Sheriff could elaborate on that dollar wise, what it costs, which won't be, but we're helping gas and tires and should, I'm not saying, that shouldn't be left on you, I'm not saying that. But it ain't as simple as just saying, "That's a straight $30,000 or $35,000 of your position." That's, that's a lot more dollars, vests, guns, ammunition, uniforms, there's a whole lot goes into that, instead of just saying, "Well, we can get five of them for that," and appreciate you pointing that out, because we don't have a better problem helping maintenance that, like we're doing that, you know? I do want to make sure people understand, Robin and I talked earlier, I don't want the public to understand, we are funding five of those without help.
Yeah.
And I think the public needs to know that.
And also, even though the city of Gornville is putting this officer in that school, they're under agreement that we're taking their liquor by the drink tax money, and they're keeping that to put that officer in. Now, if they give us that officer, they cough up the drinker by the leak, the drink money, which is some $16,000, $18,000, $20,000 or more.
You know what, you know how much we, you know how much they have us back? Jamie can elaborate more than I, but I think I've been here right, for nine years they hadn't paid us, you know how much they owe us in liquor tax? I think I'm paying $18,000 total, so about $2,000 a year.
So they're paying more.
The city of Gornville is extremely gracious in making that, I made that deal real quick when they agreed to do it.
But we would have a little money coming back from Lanning.
It's costing us about $60,000 a year, because we pay Homeland Insurance.
It what?
About $60,000 is what it's costing us on estimate.
On, on, Mr. Langford?
Yes, because he could get sergeant pay, plus we pay his insurance.
All gas. Y'all paying insurance too?
Yeah, all of it.
Pretty expensive, we appreciate y'all doing that. It's a, it's a, it's a great trade off at us for $2,000 a year, for what we're doing.
We actually have a meeting at 6 o'clock tonight, and this is going to be one of the things that we're going to talk about. I can't talk about a meeting that hadn't happened, but I will say that.
Think y'all might be in due to?
No. There's two or three different conversations went on, but the conversation that I'm personally in favor of is us funding it one more year, and letting you have another school year to get you ducks in a row, because the sheriff made a statement that you can fund all the SROs you want to, where are you going to get them? And it's going to take some time to find the people and train them.
And the training, Sheriff, did you tell me correctly, now I don't want to cut you off behind, did you tell me that you, right now, could use three officers on the road and three in the building over here? And that's, that's before we even look at, we can, that's correct?
Right. Anyway, but I can't speak to the full will of the council, but it's going to be brought up tonight. Our police chief come to us asking for more, either another officer or raises to get his salaries comparable to some of the people around us, and this would definitely help. The city of Gornville will be able to do that for him. But, and like Mr. Jones said, one boss, yeah, I think it would help you guys too, so I think it'd be a win-win for everybody. But that discussion will happen at 6 o'clock tonight, so you're welcome to come over.
The, what Colby just said was a perfect segue into the question that I have for Sheriff Hopper, which is, if we were to fund these positions, how, how long do you think it would actually take your department to get those individuals in place? And I guess another question would be, do you have individuals already that may want to take that SRO position that you would have to train a road officer in? And I guess the feasibility of doing it, and how does your pay scale compare with other counties so that it's a competitive position? That's about 16 questions I know, but.
We can't compete with Wilson County, we can't, DeKalb County just gave a big pay raise in their county. I mean, we're pretty much at the bottom of the total poll as far as pay goes and benefits. County has come up with a little more money on their health insurance benefits, but the cities, the cities all fund their employees' insurance totally, but we can't in the county for some reason, I don't know why. But that part, the pay and the benefits is one of our major setbacks on keeping folks, because we'll get them in here and train them, and then they'll go to other departments that pay more, and I don't blame them. Matter of fact, y'all are hiring my lead detective here for next year's teach school over here, so they need just going for better pay and benefits, I can't blame them.
Sure.
And Sheriff, they could even send somebody to the academy today, they'll graduate 12 weeks from now and be working for a different department 13 weeks.
Yeah, I get that.
After we've done paid for it. I don't think that's right.
That's the old doctrine, like you can't pro rate it like you do a farmer's sister or doctor, you have to come and work for me, they have to, you can't, right there in the law contract, is that correct?
No.
Well, I could use you to send me to the academy to work.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you can. I think that you can.
You can make it as a term of employment, not as a term of going to the academy.
Well, that's true, yeah, exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can't do the term of employment until you graduated the academy.
Right. So I guess.
But to answer part of your question, if I had to hire somebody fresh that was not post-certified, see, that's, that's where the hinge is on the timeframe. If I hire somebody off the street and have to train them, send them to the post, I mean, the way they've got it set up now, it takes longer to get them in the post.
Could you, if you hired somebody today, could you get them in the January academy?
I doubt it. They've only got four, I think, four classes a year down there now, where they've extended the timeframe.
They went 12 weeks.
Class size, so it's harder, harder to get them in.
Right, sure.
So I, you know, a safe estimate would be somebody fresh off the street at least a year to get them up and trained and in the school system.
So if we, if we had the money, and those you're at now, you probably couldn't be ready, but it'd be the next school year before we exit.
Depending on who we were able to hire. If we were able to hire all three post-certified people, then we could train them and get them up a lot quicker than that.
Is post-certification the requirement for an SRO position?
It is for me.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's state mandated.
I mean, I think it.
That's what I want.
No, I mean, yeah, absolutely, and that would be, that was my question, I guess I was insinuating, I mean, I think they ought to have that and a degree. It would be my preference, but, you know, I'm not the one making, making that policy, but I guess that was my question, and, because I think, would this be your biggest department if, if you ended up with a total of 10 officers? Would that be, would that exceed your road, your patrol? Your road officers?
As far as just patrol, deputies is. You're remembering with understanding required to be post-certified.
Okay, good. That's a good thing. Do you think the likelihood of hiring post-certified officers that are ready to go by the time school starts is a feasible thing or no?
Who knows? Who knows who will apply? I'm sure I've got guys in my department that will want to convert over from patrol or whatever, or whatever department they're in within my agency and want to do SROs. I know there's some interest in it.
Has the county, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just asking questions because I want to know, but has, has the county looked at, or have you looked at, doing some type of study that, you know, compares the salaries with surrounding counties and areas, so that our commission, not you, you know, you realize the problem, you know your folks are underpaid and under, you know, don't have the benefit.
We do that every year in budget finance. I didn't this year, because it hadn't worked out too well so far, so I didn't miss you.
Yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, there, there is a.
And I'm not knocking them, they do, you know what I'm saying.
I do, I do, but I also understand that your folks are sorely underpaid for what you do.
They are.
And that's the reason that you have the turnover that you have.
It is.
And it's nothing to do with what you do or your leadership or, or the employees that you hire. That is because those folks have got to make a livable wage and working right now in our department, whether it's on the road or whether it's in corrections. You know, when you can make more working at McDonald's, that is not fair. So I just wanna say that.
Amy. I take home three hundred and twelve hours a week.
Yeah, exactly.
I think I'd like to bring up something because I spoke with Kim earlier. I don't mean to put you on the spot. Um, I spoke to Kim earlier. I wasn't able to attend the meeting that was on May the thirtieth. Um, the thing is, is Kim's plan that she has to follow with the safety and the paperwork that has to be filed through the state. Uh, she was discussing the possibility of the committee with the safety committee that we have discussed through the Board of Education. And they would be going to each and every school, whether you have one or two people, and rotate so that you're not just looking always at your own school, that you can be more of a, a better set of eyes if you're looking at a different school. But do it on a, um, whether it's a monthly, what did we talk about? Whether it would be like monthly?
Semester.
Semester and work it so that we would be going through and making sure that we're familiar with everything that needs.
See, if we're following what we're seeing and.
Correct.
Picking things that you see from a, uh, you're saying maybe somebody from law enforcement, maybe somebody from the community. Be great to have ex-con, but seriously.
Right. Just, just, and it's really what, well.
What I'd get is I'd pick somebody from the jail.
But it's just, it's in a sense, it's the extra set of eyes to be going through and looking at the things, whether it's limbs on the trees. Um, whether it's a certain car parked in the same place all the time, uh, whatever, we would have to look at these. Uh, making sure that we don't have any obstructions or anything by any buildings. If we do have any wooded areas in the backside of the schools, which in some of the schools we do, we need to make sure that we're aware and that, that we have that, you know, ability to be able to see back in those areas just in case. We, we wouldn't wanna have, you know, the element of surprise.
Well, now, you know, I think sometimes we're, we're collaged over, but do we see it every day that you're saying, we had a safety meeting the other day and one of the things that really stuck in my mind was perimeter. And I hadn't thought about that. And so, you know, I thought new medicine stands out because we got four hundred K two students. They're within twenty feet of the road on a, uh, uh, on a given day with a new walking track. What a today's world with all the, the custody back. I mean, you're right there. So in my mind, last weekend I was up at Kentucky and I saw an elementary school and, and it looked good. They had a fence, but they had the concrete barriers. Where that car couldn't run off or just run through the fence and grab a kid. And I wanted to have the fence. It ain't for two reasons. It ain't for safety and to keep you from getting in. But just those kinda things we can, I think we need to be looking at. Not only if they know it, but it gives them a sense of security as a parent when you drop a child off the field of it, you know?
Well, it's no different though at Forks River School. We're right there at Forks River School. We have, I mean, you might have a little dip, but it's nothing for you to get off. You're Highway seventy, you're coming straight down. It is nothing for you to get off and, and, and for people walking the tracks because they do it for the, you know, the, the mandate for their, the actual exercise. So I mean, we're, we're utilizing it. We just need to make sure that we have some things in place.
And we need to, I'd point at myself. It's been in this several years. We need to look at it. It's different than it was five years ago, ten years ago. Well, I started a conversation with SROs. I mean, we gotta think different safety than we did sometime back.
Well, here, here's the concern that I have, you know, sitting here and listening to this discussion and, and my questions with Steve Hopper, Sheriff Hopper, is, uh, is this. You know, he's telling us, even if we fund the positions, I'm not sure that I can put a body in that position. And it's because of, you know, funding and because, you know, they just are not competitive. And that's again, not on Sheriff Hopper, but that's just the way that, that it is. So, you know, what are we gonna do about that? Because we can fund it all day long, but if we don't have one, more bodies to put in there, that's still a problem.
That's, that's fine. I was up to you six months ago, eight months ago, when you told me the same thing. You said, if we had the money, I don't know what we'd do.
So the, on the piggy, piggyback of that and on what Mark Jones said, is if we're the ones funding it, then why can't we control their pay and make it where they can? They do wanna do that. Is that feasible?
I don't know. That costs you, uh, I guess what she's asking, if we funded it and had asked, could we pay them? But that was our problems. That won't cost you with the guy here on.
Are you gonna pay the SROs?
On a different pay scale, it sounds like.
That, yeah, that's what I meant. I mean, if you're a regular road officer, I'm just throwing out numbers.
We, we could because that won't cost you a problem. We're funding it anyway.
That's what, that's what my point is. That's my point.
That makes all these road officers a joke to, or less. That would fix, that would fix our problem, but.
Well, but, but what it might do is, is put a, put, bring, bring awareness that most definitely needs to be brought in this county that our law enforcement is underpaid. I mean, that's just the way that it is. And, you know.
They're just looking.
It's not, it's not popular and we may not have to have another meeting for somebody to tell me that I, you know, say too much, but I mean, it just is what it is.
Well, if you change the pay scale for us, he can't pull somebody from our old until he gets them trained, which is still another year out, right? I mean, or six months.
No.
It's too, too expensive.
He can't. Well, that's true. He can't, he can't short his road officers, um, you know, for sure. I mean, he's not gonna leave the county unprotected. But it would fix the issue of not having people to apply because if we're fairly playing to the part, if, if we're fairly paying the school resource officers what they should be paid, it would certainly put pressure in the right places, I would think, to cause other, uh, folks within our government to fund, properly fund our sheriff's department. Now, that's not, may not be popular, but that's the truth.
Yeah, very much theater out of, out of this county. I don't mind saying it.
Do what?
I said, they're just looking at it as a way to save money if we pay for it. That's, that's as far as it'll go.
But it doesn't matter who pays for it. These are our kids. And I know, I know you get that, but.
Yeah, but, but I'm talking about your budget finance stuff. I just look at that, that's the way we've saved money. They're paying for it. And that, that is as far as it'll go.
Well, that's a pathetic view to take if that's the way it is.
But I understand what he's saying. That's the way they would look at it. That's what everybody looks at.
Well, if, if you just look at the county as a whole, teachers, police officers, EMS workers.
I know.
Office workers.
I know.
And guys, Smith County's been high.
Sure we are.
And there's gonna have to take something to beat up there and it's gonna be something papered on black. I mean, there's things people want and people need. I mean, taxpayers, we got one of the lowest tax places around. Um, low. So I don't know if anybody wants to talk about it. None of the candidates wants to talk about it, right, isn't it? Eventually it's gonna have to come to, it's gonna have to come to a head.
And people don't go to that job for the pay anyway. Some of them don't. I mean, I mow, I mow six yards a week and make more than I make now.
Oh, I know. I know that. But, you know, what I'm, I'm concerned about our kids, our safety for our kids and trying to figure out the best way to make that happen.
We need to put bodies in positions. We need to, we need to put, put a body in every school.
And the only way we're gonna be able to do that is to pay them a, a wage that they can live on. You know, I don't know. What does a road officer make, Sheriff Hopper, here?
They're around sixteen, sixteen hours, somewhere around there.
And I know off the top of my head, that's about four dollars an hour less than any county touching us.
We've got to, uh, use a salary comparable counties. We can't use Wilson and Bubba.
Sure.
I mean, we've gotta be comparable with Clay and DeKalb and Macon and such as that.
Right.
Costs of them, of course.
Right.
But do they have, do they have any school outlets that Smith County's got?
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Where does the funding come from now that you fund the five officers?
Our budget.
Our river budget.
But where does that money come from originally?
State and county.
State, state, federal, county, federal, state, I think. A little bit of all. As I was saying, my thought was if all the money's coming from the county, that portion of the money that you're using to pay for the officers is coming from the county, then there, I don't see that they could raise the sal, I mean, it's all coming from the same pot. Would they just, okay.
Uh-uh. Our pots are different.
Four different inches.
And, I mean, you've got a maintenance of effort issue too. They couldn't pull that funding to, to now pay for SROs because they've gotta maintain what our budget is every year. Am I right on that?
You're right.
And.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll finish.
No, I just, I was just gonna tell, from looking at Sheriff's point of view, and I thought of that, but I have to think that I mentioned Mr. Lewis a couple of years ago. We got an argument, a disagreement, Mr. Lewis, because we had just some money come in and I wanted to give, Gina remembers, I wanted to give my, and I didn't look at it from a manager point of view at that time. I just looked at it in my department. And he said, Barry, I can't give just your spit of the ass you're asking, but I can pay for it. And he said, when I do that, you have to think like me. He says, you gotta get, I'll have to pay for Cook, I have to pay for E A, I have to pay it. Not that that's bad, but I don't have the money to do that. And so I think that's what will cause Sheriff the problem. Like you said, you're a road officer, you're a person working in the jail. They're all gonna flock to us. We won't have a great bunch to choose from. But working in the team with you, is that, that even be doable anyway? You know what I mean?
And, and I don't, that's why I kind of deferred the brand a while ago because I don't know, within our pay, the county would allow us to pay this group this. Make a difference in the SROs to where they're way up here and everybody else is down here.
And so the way it ran.
And it wouldn't be fair.
Patrols up here, so it was down here, I mean. Around here, Dean.
Oh, I know, but that's not the way it is.
I know, but this is Smith County. This ain't built in a same like making the rules and there are new problems. They put the more that they don't like our problems in the SRO position.
I mean, we gotta start, you have to start some problems. You gotta see what, I mean, if Sheriff Hopper can.
Fund us one more year while we're searching and be thankful for them. But I'd agree with Mr. Jones, I think, it always had one boss. They need to be a person over this eventually when we get there. But like I said, I, I mean, of course, there might be another option out there, but, you know, I just think about there, Sheriff, and say, hey, we want three more officers, so what you do?
Well, what are we gonna do come August first? That's what I wanna know.
That, that's gonna be hard to do anyway.
They just told you that now. Well, drop that pun unless we don't do something else.
I think, I think you plan with what we got right now and go forward with it, but hopefully the town of Gornsville is gracious to us and, and put, keep that in there.
To give us one more year.
And, and gives us one more year and hopefully maybe the sheriff comes in, he's like, hey, I've got two or three I can give, you know, I got two or three guys. We start out first of August with everybody in the school. That's the hope for the best. A real ally, you know, I'll see.
We could lose the one in Gornsville.
And we might not have these three, so we might be losing. If they could fund us one more year and, and Mr. Witter started out with and the county commissioner could come up with two and then we could get this grant money. We hope, you know, that's just, they're gonna do something, they were appropriate, I think, twenty-five million, which is not a lot across the state. And then a reoccurring five million, so you're not gonna get much after the first year, to be honest. That, that's still not gonna, I bet somebody walking through that door August first. I don't know what we done. I don't know what the answer to that is, other than just be as prepared as we can be with what we got. And Matthew, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I know you have a question.
You, you're fine. Um, I'm really happy that you're having this meeting. I really am. And that you have this, uh, this group together as committee. Um, SRO officers are, are very important. They are. Uh, not only for the peace of mind for the parents, the teachers, and for us itself, but there's more to this than just having an SRO officer. You've gotta look at the IT background of it, um, battery backups, things of that nature, uh, and lighting. As simple and as simple as putting in an extra light in a, you know, key position could help you especially at night or during bad weather. Uh, give you more security.
And I want to step in and you talk, because that.
Sure.
We, lighting is something that's coming. That will be addressed in the Johnson control site that we've been waiting on.
I thought it would be, but I didn't know.
Yeah, that's, that's addressed this one again. Uh, like I said, the, we've probably got in the schools right now. The homeless security system, the best system ever seen in school. Uh, I think those things, but I didn't mean to cut you off, but I want to reinforce a lot of those things. We're way ahead and we can't be too good in that. But I want your, very intelligent. I wanna hear your side of the night. I think you're gonna.
Gotcha. Um, how's the battery backups been installed?
We hadn't got anybody in. We have addressed it since you and I thought, but, and we need that, but that's still not gonna stop an intruder from coming in.
It's not, but I mean, it's one more thing because it hasn't happened yet and God willing it won't. Uh, but I mean, there could be a hostage situation where they could pull the master power and you're done. Uh, I know in schools that you and I toured, uh, the master cutoff is unsecured. Uh, anybody who knows where it is can go up, flip it, and then you're done. You have no internet. You have no eyes in there. You have nothing.
Yeah, that's, that's not something probably we need to.
Be talking about here.
In a public meeting.
But those haven't been addressed with our person right now. And, and I know I told you that, but numerous times, but there's some reasons for that that I can't.
And that's fine. That's fine. Um, but, you know, something as simple as a radio for the staff to communicate with, that's lacking in a lot of the school systems, uh, schools themselves.
In, in the assessment that we've completed, it, it covers a lot of the, well, a majority of the areas. And as a group, we've identified things that we want to improve on. Some easy fixes, some not, not as easy, but, you know, it's, it's a process. And it, it, we are looking at multiple areas, not just SROs.
I wanna say one last thing and I've gotta cut out and head to the council meeting. The town of Gornsville does not want Gornsville Elementary to do without an SRO. I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, and personally, my vote is I hope we can keep our SRO in there till the day that Newman walks in. So I just wanted to throw, I, I, I don't want the perception to be the town of Gornsville's the bad guy and hates SROs. It's just kind of a situation where we're needing that funding back and you guys need to have it all under one roof. But I just wanted to clear that up before it gets out there that, that my personal vote, I would like to keep our SRO in there until we have one to walk in to replace it. But, uh, I appreciate you guys letting me speak and, uh, we'll, uh, uh, tune in to the, uh, Gornsville Council meeting and see where the results are. I, I think Jamie's gonna head that way too.
Well, hey, I'd like for you to express too from how much we appreciate her return, them being gracious enough to host and to, and to give us one. And knowing that what we're giving back and it's been very appreciated.
I will, for sure. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Colby.
See, Col.
Let David introduce your, what we talked about and what we went down and met with Mr. Gina about and.
All right.
Sheriff was sitting with us. We talked to Sheriff about it the other day a little bit and.
Okay, there's two kinds of security, uh, two kinds of SRO, uh, school officers. There's SROs and there's SSOs. Uh, basically, the only difference, um, if you hire, um, post-certified officers is, uh, the SSO in-house. Totally in-house. School system hires, fires, um, evaluates. I mean, it's, it's another department of the school system. And, uh, Buford's expert in this. I was, I wanted him, invite him down to, to talk about it and, and try to explain things a little bit better. If you have any questions, uh, I'm sure that he can answer them. Um, Buford, would you like to get up and talk?
Gee, thanks.
What?
Give you a little background, uh, God bless a uniform. I spent thirty years. Don't look poor. Especially. God bless you. But going back to what David said. There's two ways to go about this. And you've gotta look at it from the aspect of which way you wanna go. Your department is one way. I, I do a lot of state and federal expert witness testimony. Right now, I've got four cases that I've been hired in and all four of them are failure to protect. And all four of them, they're gonna lose. Because they knew the stuff was going on and did nothing about it. And this is where it comes in. At, at least you are showing something yourself, that you're trying to do something about it. But trying to do something and actually doing it, all that does is if you don't do it, add zeros to that big check. And you go back and look at every shooting that we've had, where we've had an active shooter, has lost it or more for failure to protect. Now, the private sector that Dave was talking about is, uh, you take and you pick certified private security personnel. Um, I can't call the name. I can't call the names, because I wouldn't even call your name, if anyone else, but there are four Christian schools right now that we have trained and certified, and they have their own in-house security. Matter of fact, one of them, the headmaster, she carries three guns on her at all times, and she is real serious about protecting her kids, very serious. They go through the training, access of the training of what a regular security officer goes through, and they have stations set up in their facility that the teachers have access to, or the security people have access to, that are the ones that know where it's at, whether it's a closet or a locker, radios, shotgun, trauma kits, first aid jets that they can get to at any time that they need. They have a lockdown systems, that they punch a button and every door is locked back. They have situations where they have, one of them has got fifteen of their teachers trained and certified as armed security officers. So that's another way that you can go, and like David said, that's your in-house that you can follow through. Now, will that take the place of your post-certified? Absolutely not. Unless you take these people and turn them into more training and more training and more training. And that's where it comes in, it's not only training your personnel, but it's training everybody that's there. The teachers have got to know what to do. And that's where we see a lot of the problems, is we train our deputies and we train our security staff, but everybody over here are got the attitude of, it's not going to happen to me. And when it does hit the fan, they panic, and then they get in the way of law enforcement, while they're trying to do their job. Then if something goes downhill, the first thing everybody wants to do is point at these guys, that y'all screwed up. And that's not the way to go with it. So you've got to make sure everybody's on the same playing field when this happens one way or the other. You can take an armed trained security officer and put them through this simple training, just like what law enforcement does carry, the time sprays, electronic devices, and all this kind of stuff. Of course, they're not going to be going through the post-certification where they work in traffic accidents and investigations and stuff like this, like they do in the post-certified schools, but they'll still be getting some of the training that you could take and supplement, at least until the sheriff can come up with some. So it's another aspect. And this way, these people, if you get the armed certified security officers, they're already gone through the NCIC background check, they've already gone through everything. But you know, when I'm involved in it, we set them down and we put them through another drill, where we set them down with a question and answer type series, and you know, we try to rule the cowboys out very quickly, and God forbid, there are several of them out there, that just basically want to get into the old shoot 'em all and God sort them out, and we don't want to go there. But that's a supplement that you can do. It is, everything that you've been talking about is, everything is going to happen, but everywhere I go, it comes down to the same thing, the dollar. But what you've got to convince people to do is to look at that school bus when it unloads, and put a value on what's on that school bus. And it's like we tell everybody when they come through the classes, what would you spend to protect your child? If you can't answer that, then that was the right answer, because there is no answer to it. So when the people get the mindset of, we've got to do something, okay, everybody wants to say, we've got to do something, but nobody wants to come up with an answer. We already know what the answer is, y'all been talking about it, but you've got to address it and figure out how you're going to do it. But with the in-house private security, they'd be working, Davis County, they have their own in-house security, and it's supplemented by police officers in the schools. So there's a couple of other counties that have the same thing. So it's, it can be done, you've just got to figure out how you're going to do it.
My issue with Buford was, the ones that we got SROs in and the ones that we don't, and then some we got to go from school to school. Anybody that wanted to do something, you know, they could just sit there and watch and plan out, or have a lookout on that one car, and then something happened, and then it's our rear end.
Right. And that's one thing we try to stress everybody, is you don't set the pattern, parking the same spot.
No.
You don't do any of that stuff, but you'd be surprised how many people want to argue that's my parking spot. And why, you know, well, I don't care, I'm parking somewhere else today.
Right.
If they want to blow your car, that's fine, I don't care, I'm thinking it's mine, I don't care. But people have got to get in their head that this is, I use the phrase all the time, Andy and Barney are no longer with us. We've got to get into the real world. And you was talking about losing officers, I can tell you, Metro Police Department lost a hundred and thirty-seven officers since January first. And it's two reasons, one, they moved on to another department, and two, some of the things were happening there, they didn't want to mess with it.
You was talking about parking places at the hospital, you know, you got the physician's parking spot, guess whose cars always got keyed? One of the physician's parking spots.
Yep, exactly. But yeah, any questions or any answers that I can help give, I'll be glad to assist, to help on any form of way of action, because it's, it's a problem. Yes? How many school systems do you know that have an in-house security that are, have a population in that county of less than twenty-five thousand? All that I couldn't answer at all, but I can tell you, it's probably going to be a very few. So you know, again, that's, that's a, I don't know.
You might can answer that, I've had this question since we've been here. What about, you know, Sheriff, I hate to tell you that thus, but I always do when I need to, like, it's true, an officer throws somebody down to, or I can say, it worked for me, it works for him, you know, the liability is where I'm going with it, you know, that's a big thing for us, and would that point into a lot of extra dollars insurance wise? I guess.
Yes and no, it's going to depend upon what your insurance carrier is going to be covering. But under Title Forty of TCA Code, if a private system is going to use it, can make a citizen's arrest under Title Forty. So as far as the red powers and anything else goes, yes, you still got that. You'd just be making that arrest as a private citizen, not as a law enforcement officer. But yeah, but the liability, you know, technically, if you look at it, that big old word called vicarious liability, they're looking for the deep pockets, no matter which way it's going to go, so even if you got a deputy in the school system, the sheriff's going to get sued, and so's school system. Everybody's going to get sued.
Oh, everybody's.
You know, they're going to spread it around until it gets into the court, and don't want to make any attorneys mad, but you know, they get in the back room and they want to figure it out, and which one, which one are you going to pay, which one are you going to pay, are we going to split this up?
Someday.
So that's the way it works.
Well, hopefully the jury figures that out.
Yep.
There's some, there's some, no, not all. Got to take that for you and my daughter.
Well, the only thing I say, with the private security purpose, plus the legality and the insurance purposes for us, is when I go to a mall, and I think, Mr. Jones, I heard one of your speeches sometime, when I go to the mall, and I'm at a mall, and I see a guy walking around with a little badge on, and a security guy, to be honest with you, I don't pay him no mind. When a police officer walks by in a uniform, I perk up and pay him with a mind. When I walk up to a place and I see a patrol car sitting out front, I pay with a mind. When I walk out to the mall and I see a little white vehicle walking around, it's got a little green flashing light, it don't say security, I don't pay him no mind.
And you're not telling them one?
Yeah. So personally, I would pay a uniform officer a little bit more mind and respect than I would a security officer.
Well, I think, I think.
What about a combo?
Well, and I think that's what, you know, if I'm, if I'm trying to read what we have going on here, no matter what we're looking at, we have a year. We have a year. We've got to do something, though, and whether you're doing it as a, what, six and three is what we're trying to look at for the time being, just to get us to the next level, and it might be a year and it might be two years. You know, I think we definitely need to look at our safety plan, look at all the avenues that we need to address to make our area safe, and be vigilant on what needs to be fixed and how immediate needs to be done. The possibility of getting training for certain people within the school system, whether their security or however you want to call it, awarenesses for inside the building and people that have had a different type of training, sometimes look at things differently. And it's not a matter of putting them, you know, as private security or security of the facility, but if you have trained individuals that have gone through a little bit of, a different type of training, I mean, I know with teaching the handgun classes and the people that have gone through my class and the handgun classes, they come out of it and they're like, you know, I never really thought about it that way. You know, I just, I didn't think about it. Why would you want, but now I see why you want to see where all the exits are to the buildings, why you want to make sure that you're looking at where the doors are and whether they're locked or they're not locked, and what kind of locks, and the ability to have the breakaway locks on the doors, you know, and if you actually, or we allow classes for maybe people within the school system that want to further information, so you might call it, and have someone like Mr. Toons here go ahead and go through this, I mean, it's simply an awareness, it's not that we're saying, this is what you have to do, or, it's an awareness of what can be out there and what they can, you know.
Yeah, and one reason I wanted him to come, more than any other thing, after listening to him down there, is what you just said, the training of our staff regardless of what could, I think, you know, Buford, correct me if I'm wrong, but who should have a better awareness of the community, mom and daddy's had a custody battle, that kid don't act right, there's such a tarnish in that teacher or that custodian.
Right.
So if we could get more training, I'm sitting there thinking, Gina always does more for insurcement, but not just insurance, but training, we need to make it so that our staff, that's the cheapest and the most efficient for money, is to train their staff in a way.
One thing that you can do is at very low a cost, if any, and I'm sure you've got people around that you probably know that you could ask for volunteers to be intruders. I'm not talking about going in as a gun or anything, I'm talking about just going into the facility and walk around.
Walk around.
And see who's going to say, hey, what are you doing, can I help you?
You just sit and walk in a back door, or rock in it, or.
I mean, I walked out over one of the local universities downtown, medical, walked, and had a girl with me, and she walked right into the nuclear power, on nuclear laboratories and all that stuff, nobody, she was standing there, had a fake swipe card, and she's standing there, and guess what, people come up and say, you're a card networker, take mine. So these things that you, when you, when you take your own people, I mean, you could go out here and get somebody to dress up like they're living under the bridge, and start walking around the school, and see if anybody does say anything, or how long does it take them to say anything? Or maybe just somebody in a camo uniform walking around with a backpack, with sunglasses on.
Or just a suit, tie, you know.
Well, and it could be.
You better let Sheriff Hopper know that one's coming. And they'll get a few phone calls.
Somebody in charge will know what's going on. You can't just, I mean, we've done several active shooter programs, and they want us to actually come in and do the takeover, and I'm going, hell no. I said, because that'd be the first day that five people in there decide to carry their guns with them. I said, so we're not going to, we're not going to play that one. But you know, when we do the training, it's in the face, I mean, I don't do this little patchy on the rear end and say, oh, it's going to be fine. If you can't handle it, you can't handle it, if you have to leave, you have to leave, I'm sorry. Matter of fact, you know, we kind of tuned our horn, we're doing all the training right now for our private security staff in Tennessee Highway Patrol, we picked out the whole state to do that training, and it's about a hundred and thirty hours of training that they go through.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Woodard and Mr. Jones, they're both still here, Mr. Mason left, I think, I wish I'd gotten this question out before, before he left, but starting with you, Bill, if you don't mind, the concerns that you've heard tonight from the board and from the sheriff, give y'all both an opportunity to speak, what is your solution and how do you think we can make a difference?
Well, just speaking for myself and the position that I would take and will take, obviously, you probably, Gina, you obviously know this too, Mr. Smith there, he's got a degree in administration, you've got people in our school system that know what we need to do, and I don't want to hear them, I, I can, if you want to pin a rock up in a mountain, I can do that, if you want to build a company, I can do that, there's a lot of things I have ability to do. But educating children and security for these schools is not one of those things, and I think we need to let the people that know how to do that tell us what to do, and we need to listen to them. See, that's the other part that's so bad, is many times, we'll ask the sheriff a question, or we'll ask somebody a question, and we get the answer we don't want, and so we don't listen to them. We need to listen to these folks that know what they're doing, and my solution is, is find people that are qualified to tell us what the plan is, and listen to them, and then figure out what to fund.
Mark.
I'm going to agree with him on listening to people that's considered experts in this area. Lucky me. Being an official for twenty-one years, Master Tactical Operator, I've done the classes, I've turned the active shooter classes, I've done them myself, I've put them on for those departments, I've been part of it for years and years and years. My opinion, and I understand the state's concern is, you can't, just because you got the money, don't mean you can house that position. My opinion is, priority one, safety of our people, we're going to fund this, if I have anything to do with it. The, I don't like private security, it's like taking something that the government owns and reach out, outsourcing to somebody else, you lose all control, in my opinion. We need a, this committee's a huge step, in my opinion, moving forward in this, you have got, the end, got to put an SRO in every school. The funding's there, if I have anything to do with it.
There's really two aspects to it. We're talking about SROs, we're talking about education, we're talking about being vigilant, that's all the preventative side. Emergency Operation Plan is reactive, when something happens, that's when that goes into place. Now, can that be improved and tweaked? Sure it can, and we have to train on it as well, but it is not a prevention tool, it's a reaction tool.
Mate, just one other thing that comes to my mind, and this, forget politics, I don't care about this, when you walk into a school, I am sure that there are people who can identify troubled children, and they know who they are, and I don't know how we do this, and I'm not really sure I know what's going on right now to address this, but if you've got a child that is troubled, and they are somebody that's predisposed to do something like this, I think they need some type of help, and I, I know we've only got two guidance counselors in the county that are trying to cover what, fifteen, or how many, I don't know, I do not know.
Depends on what.
Five, I think.
Depends on, you got five, okay.
I think that's correct.
You got five, and I don't know that, are they tasked with trying to help in situations like this, or is this something, when you've got a child that's at risk, is that addressed? I know it's addressed, but how is it addressed?
Well, there's several, well, you just got to start, like we said, with the classroom teacher probably first, and then we have my parents, but as far as funding, we're over, we've got more staff than, not saying that's correct, man, we could probably use one in a hundred, but I think, I think I'm telling you correct. But, but I think, I think I'm telling you correct, uh, uh, they fund us one or recommend one for seven hundred and fifty students. So we actually are overstaffed according to what they tell us. We don't agree with that, obviously. But as far as what they say division wise, we've got more than by the numbers and what we're being paid for. But we could use, in my opinion, five more. It's gonna have enough.
Well, I, I, I guess my thought.
Yes, BP funding, you know, claims one for seven fifty.
Right.
We're, we're about one over on what, as far as staff, but we, we need them absolutely.
From, from the ground level, it's a village raising it. When, when a student comes in and they go to PE and they act differently. That PE teacher communicates with that classroom teacher, they talk about it, and then it goes up the process. That, I mean, sure, I'm sure there's a child maybe that goes unnoticed that's quiet about it or doesn't act out. But when there's something different, they do address it and they go through.
And we're lucky here too. We still live in a, a situation where we know where kids, I mean, you know, you know, we're from a hundred and sixty kids up to about six hundred, depending on which school you're in, even the high school. But, but we know our families. I don't like, know all the parties there. But I'm saying that teacher knows who Tommy Manning is, who his wife, they're having trouble. If they've had a history of violence, if they're in a divorce, if they're in custody battle, we know where kids. And that, that's a really, really big advantage to some system.
Well, I, I feel like that's a vital part of, I was listening to, uh, them talk about some of the other school shootings in other places and that was one of the components that they had is trying to identify. I mean, we, we look at terrorist groups and, and they try to preempt them and stop them before they can ever get to the point where they're gonna do anything. And I know you guys are, are doing that here in the schools, but I think that is a vital component of, of trying to identify a troubled child and keep them from getting to the point where they're going to do something crazy.
Yeah, there, there's been indicators on every school shooting we've had or any active shooter situation. But the problem is all the indicators show up after it's over. We have to go back. There he is on the computer talking about this, this and the other. But if you go back and look, um, at most of the kids that's involved in the shootings. There's another kid pop up two days after he's done what he's gonna do and says, man, I heard him talking about this, but I didn't take him serious. Well, what we've got to do, we've got to convince these kids that this is not snitching. This is saving somebody's life and maybe is, to get them to come forward. Um, I heard, and I don't know about this, uh, for sure, but I heard that there was a program implemented like the call by the gun, you get a, what, a fifty dollar reward? Somebody makes a phone call to the, uh, TBI, something about a gun. I forgot what it was, like that in the school. But you know, something like that could be implemented also, um, as a crime stopper type call.
We have an anonymous hotline that goes through the sheriff's department. It doesn't reward, you know, you don't get a gift card, but it is an anonymous hotline that.
Right.
You can report anything. You don't have to be.
You all have any type of crime stopper thing.
Biggest thing you've got, and I've been around too long, so I'm gonna say amen.
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 Pretty much what Mr. Toons said. We have got to make up our mind what kind of program we're gonna have. Keep the politics out of it, number one. Number two, you're gonna have to convince everybody. Ever bad things ever happened, Mr. Smith, can a teacher knew it, somebody knew it, the hell it didn't report it. I'm not talking about the students. I'm talking about people who should have. And that's what you gotta get across. And if it don't happen, you ought to fire them. I, I take a lot stronger, he knows what I'm talking about. There's a couple of things that's happened here that should have never happened. I've not forgotten and I won't forget them to the day I die. But I can tell you, you need to get it across to your staff. And everybody in these school sessions, what you're expecting. No BS to it. Say, this is the way it is. Get them to take it. We, we got into this, we can't open our mouth syndrome too long. We're past that now.
Amen.
Sheriff can't do nothing if he don't know it. He can't do nothing if he can't know it, he'll know it. Mr. Bayden back there can't do nothing if he don't know it. He gotta tend it. And you gotta convince your people to tend it. And the people who know it are the students, are first of all. Second place is your teachers. And get it across to them. I feel pretty strongly about that, obviously, but, uh.
It's alright.
Just know that's the way it is. And I agree with what Mr. Toons said ten thousand percent. You all are gonna have to make up your mind once you want. That's what y'all's job, for you to get that high pay. That's y'all's job. Don't worry about that.
Need, need four things. Need a body in every school, training, training, training. That's all it is. It's that simple. Money's there. Just gotta do it.
I agree.
If we don't do it, it's our fault. Something happens, it's our fault.
Have you got any big business here? Anything? Okay, go to those people. Uh, we did this once before. Um, yeah, I had the special response tactical team for the police network for several years. And we was having a problem getting some equipment that we wanted. So we got permission and we went out and did fundraisers and bought it ourselves. So when you, when you go out there and do something like this, I mean, you put it out there. We're having a fundraiser to buy, uh, body armor for our, our security school people or whatever. Uh, you'd be surprised if people would kick in for it, especially with all the crap going on right now. So, you know, that's something, you know, you may have to get the, the legal involved in it to make sure that all the thieves are crossed and eyes are dotted, but, uh, we didn't have a problem with it.
We don't have the bodies.
Do an SSO till you get the bodies.
Make sure it goes where it's supposed to go.
I think.
That way, that way you got somebody going on all your school trips. You can make them get a school bus license. They can do, you can eliminate the drivers right there, school bus driver you want to pay because, uh, SSO be driving the bus to the events. You call ahead to the other events and see what kind of security they're gonna have there too also. Whether you need bringers or not. But, uh, you can use that program until you get SRO bodies, till you can get bodies in there. Hell, you made five people like me that's both. I mean, I'm an LEO, I'm certified. I'm also, uh, up in ranks in security. He'll tell you that. Uh, I make more money in security by far, probably four times as much. But what you gonna have to do is put, you, you, you gotta put a body in there, you gotta train on, train on, train on. Document that training. Something happens, you're covered. As long as it's, as long as they're got that training. Don't matter, it, it doesn't matter if it says they're the vice president of the United States or they went to fifty hours of training. It don't matter. They went to train.
Give, give an example. In the morning, eight o'clock, I've got a meeting with the heritage staff downtown in Nashville. Yeah, I guess y'all saw what happened to Andy Jackson's tomb. And, uh, now all of a sudden, now they're being reactive instead of proactive. Now they've decided, uh, after five years of me going in and doing a survey and telling you need more cameras, you need better trained people, you need more people. Now they've decided they're gonna do it since the big losses hit now because of, I forgot what it was. It's involved something to do with the historical stuff now. Filing something against them for a failure to protect the tomb or some kind of stuff. I don't know what it was.
But, you know, you, you will have trouble finding, I mean, as far as LEO and security, uh, combined. You will have trouble finding them. Promise. I, I can have you ten, two weeks.
The biggest thing you're breaking that too is, I'm just sitting here trying to think. Just about every single private school that I've dealt with around the middle Tennessee area has their own private security staff.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not much different from campus police.
Right.
Very little difference. So campus police, LEO.
That what they said back here, you know.
But you can get LEO, you get part-time, you get retaliance.
I had a, a security officer, but if you get the right people and you train them the right way. Uh, and you, you, you weed out the little wannabes and get the people that are serious.
You need the, you need the, you need the seasoned, mature ones. You need the, uh, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, I have been one, I have one other question though, through this. Uh, I would still, you know, if this is an avenue that we've decided or would think about doing. I still would like them to have to answer to the sheriff's department in a sense so that, you know, we keep those lines of communication open.
That, that's fine.
I mean, I think you look back to if you have a custody battle, if you have a restraining order, if you have anything of that nature that you would have to.
That's a legal one. I don't know.
Well, that's a given fact too. You can always resort to the hospital.
But they would have to go back. I mean, these are the things that would have to go back to the police. You know, that we would have to.
They do the same thing as, um, Jason or anybody else would do.
At our school. Uh, I'll have to go to altar steward.
Correct.
If we have, if there's legal documentation on kids and parents comes to the teachers a lot of times, which I think is wrong, uh, which comes to other problems from DCS and down. We, we're probably not gonna know because DCS won't release any information to us. They put a kid in our school that he may have shot somebody in another county, but they don't tell us he shot somebody in another county. So that's a legal thing that we value daily of knowing who was what's in our schools. And that happens at Gormanville High School this year, probably three or four times.
Did, did I understand you to say a minute ago that the authority for the arrest would be a citizen's arrest?
Yes.
See, as a, I mean, as a defense lawyer, I would have a field day with that. I mean, uh, Mr. Beller, Mr. Beller. I mean, that would be.
But if they were part-time or retired LEO, plus had the security. They could arrest anywhere on that campus, not off campus, but on that campus.
I know, but one, one mistake, one mistake. Even, even with a certified officer, you know that.
Yeah. That, that's gonna happen either way. I'm just saying this would be something to implement until.
We get somebody.
State can get his workforce up, which might be now, it might be two months, it may be two years.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just thinking.
The bucket don't just keep getting fuller. It's got a leak in it.
Yeah, I know. I, I get, I totally get what you're saying. I'm just thinking from a different perspective.
I know the ball back in the state sheriff's because I believe you can get free or, uh, or some officers. I think you'll have threat to fail from your, your internal force to take your jobs. I think you would.
I'm sure it would.
Well, if he did.
I know a guy outside that would take one when you put him through the school.
That's just gonna take away from, from his patrols and now.
Maybe it's gonna take a year to train them, right? A year.
Not if they're already post-certified.
Get them in enrolled in class.
No, not if you find somebody that's already post-servant, part-time law board. Which there's a ton of them because security capable and law boards.
You gotta find them too.
Find them.
If you had somebody that's post-certified, the only other thing that they've got to do is a forty-hour SRO school.
Which if, an SSO program, I'd, I'd recommend they had a minimum eighty hours of training a year.
If somebody green, they've gotta go through an FTO program too.
Right.
Like our patrol, if they come out of the county.
Right.
Then they go to FTO program.
Yeah, sure.
And how do you want them?
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. Well, I mean, I, and to a point that David mentioned earlier. Our, our SROs does not need to be your problem officers and your officers that nobody wants to deal with. They ought to be the cream of the crop. They are, they are not be, I mean, they, they ought to be the best of the best.
Well, it's like he said, Kit wouldn't be SRO, but he said he needed him as a detective. And he did, cause he got nobody else to take that position. It's that good.
Yeah, I know.
So you, you, I mean, it just don't happen. And I do the same thing. I mean, why, why should he, why should he negate his department?
Yeah, I get it.
To supplement somebody else if he not getting none of that out?
I know.
It actually costs him. And I don't blame you. I'd do the same thing.
Now, is there something that we're wanting to put on our next board agenda? I mean, is that where we're at with this right now?
We need to do something. We need to put bodies in our schools.
Are we gonna, are we making a decision here today? Cause we could talk about this all night long.
No.
Are we, I mean. No, no, I know that, but I'm saying, is this something that we are gonna make a decision to put on the next board agenda?
Well, I don't think, this is my opinion. I don't think we've gotten there yet enough.
Information.
Information. I think you need to tell me or whoever that, that what you like put together, numbers or figures or combination or nothing or, and then, then discuss it. Am I right, Mr. Beller?
We.
I think at the least, guys, we ought to have a, a training session for our employees.
Well, I feel we'll start.
Well, he can check into, check into that and see what.
Can you do in-house training? This room good? Question asked, question answered.
Wait, I'm sorry.
No, I said question asked, question answered. Whatever.
You know, you kind of, again, I guess on a good note. I had somebody come up to me a while back and they asked me, they said, how secure do you think your school? And I said, I think they're secured in the United States. And I said, with that being said, they're very unsafe. And they said, that didn't make any sense. I said, it makes a lot of sense. I said, tell me a, a building designed, the house the most precious thing there is, it can be more poorly designed in a school. I mean, you brought up a point when we're looking at sites for, you know, I got a thing, well, you could do that. You can shoot through any window from the, I mean, I'm just saying, it's so, it's so insecure and.
Pick them up.
But I'm bragging on our staff. We came out in publication last month. We were on the top ten in South Tennessee as far as ranked safety. And I believe we work hard at doing that. A lot of things we can't talk about here that, that we do. But, but we still need to be tried for taking, and you made me think something that, that Mr. Toons said. You know, I know Beretta has completely, which nearly came here, had completely heightened my understanding. Bulletproof vests, uniforms.
Oh, they, they've supplied, they supply gallons of their, their vehicles, their, their vests, their guns, weapons, EMS. And they're building another, and they're building another building down there too, another factory.
To, to help the SRO. But, but we, you know, we don't have that, but hopefully we're gonna have something like that tonight. You know, like I said, I think this is one of the sites they looked at coming actually. So if we got them looking for where we would have been at, but we didn't. But I do think private would help. I think the point you made, it, it's the greatest thing in the world. I mean, that's what you can't, one reason I've been very fortunate, every role I've been in, it should be successful. Not because I knew much about anything, but safety was big to me and I made sure and they felt it. You know, if you don't have discipline and safety, you can't have a school system. You're not gonna have good test scores. It's the fundamental root of everything. And even if we wouldn't do nothing but babysitting, that would be the number one thing on our plate, is take your babies.
No matter what plan you come up with.
Well.
You can put law enforcement off your shoulder to shoulder in this parking lot, all the way around this building. Somebody's still gonna find a way.
Oh, yeah.
To do something.
But what, what interests me in this.
Best that you can do with what you've got to do with.
I've got.
We can be the best we can be.
I've got some cousin in California. I called and I said, what are they doing in your school system about security? Got SROs? He goes, no, they got their own private security. And I said, how's that working out? He said, well, it's good. Said, they, they train, uh, two weekends a month. He's, I said, what do you mean to it? He said, it's just like a little SWAT team. I said, like a little cert team? He said, yeah. He said, that. He said, and they got a trainer that comes in twice a month. They train. He said, that's, that's part of your poem. He said, he said. He said, it's just like a little.
Why don't, why don't I propose here if we can get some numbers put together?
See, some questions. Next, their next meeting is have a, a discussion question where everybody, if you have an idea that you want Mr. Smith to look into.
Any kind of idea.
That can give us some numbers, any, anything your thing fits, whether it's the private, does that, you know, privatizing, whatever we wanted.
Or anything to put a body in each school. I don't care if it's.
The SROs, you know.
I'll do it for free type deal.
Well, let's, let's look at, let's look at these things. Let's look at what the cost would be. Let's look at what the possibility of the cost would be to go ahead and make it a class that we could have, whether it be, you know, cause you can't put every single teacher in, ev- you know, a class. We need to, we need to look at and, and go through with the principles and make, you know, put it up in the principles.
Let's just give everybody a week to think about streamline of questions.
Put it in a discussion.
Give me what you want then.
Yeah, yeah. Let, let everybody think about it and have a.
There's something I'm gonna go ahead and ask, like insurance and lobby and that kind of thing.
We'll do that and everybody think about your question before the next, next week.
So are we gonna put that on the agenda as a discussion?
As a discussion. That way he can start looking into cost, what it's going, you know, how it's gonna affect everything. Everybody think about that through this week. If you've got questions, well, that, that way you get a good clear question.
Card that you pay now, sure.
More time to think about some stuff.
For some of these people, it's gonna walk you.
Right, right. Is there any more discussion? Any more questions? We'll, we'll have a discussion question next meeting that will allow you to ask Mr. Smith what you want looked into. We'll, we'll have a discussion question next meeting that will allow you to ask Mr. Smith what you want looked into. If not, we want to thank everybody for coming out and all the discussion. It, it's been, this is of course very well worth it for the safety of our students, and we want to thank everybody.
And I'd like to thank all the county officials that's here tonight, they did a good time out to be here. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Uh, biggest crowd we've had, in a good way.
Sheriff, I appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Oh, you're, oh, you're a father, bud.
Thank you all. All right.
I said.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Apple, all of the factors, aye?